We're going to go ahead and call the city council meeting for December 5th to order. Let the record reflect a starting time of 7:22. And may it, clerk Swob, would you please take the roll?
Councilmember Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Daniels.
Present.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Spadafor. Councilmember Spitzley is present. Councilmember Wood.
Here.
There are eight members present in quorum. No, no members are absent. And we are to the meditation and pledge of allegiance.
All right, do we have people that we need to remember tonight? Mayor Shore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for several councilmembers pointing this way. I did not write a speech, and I'm not going to for this. I still sit here, as I know we all do, in a state of shock that our friend Bishop David Maxwell passed away. We knew he was sick. We thought he was getting better. I cannot picture Lansing without David Maxwell. He has been here for so many years, helping so many people. Whether you agreed with him or disagreed with him, he was, he was the voice in your head that was telling you what's right. And, and I miss him, and I will miss him for a very long time. So, again, I don't want to give a speech. I know this is just a time when council remembers people. But I thank you for letting me say that. And, and I know his, the ceremony is going to be, the homegoing of his life will be this Thursday from 6:00 to 8:00 at Elias or Baptist Church. And I think they might have an extra the next day, but I'm not sure if it's for family or if it's for everybody. I know Mrs. Maxwell was still working on that. But certainly, I, I hope we will remember the Maxwell family. I hope we remember all of, all of our friends and employees and everyone who knew him and the whole city, not only of Lansing but of Flint and the rest of the state, and honestly, the nation as he was pastoring nationally now. I hope we'll all remember him and keep him in our prayers.
Absolutely. Do we have others? Vice President Wood.
Since our last council meeting, which was a few weeks ago, we did lose Claude Beavers. Many of you might be aware of Claude and Anita, very active in the Colonial Village neighborhood. Claude would come down here on a regular basis and talk to us about parks and the importance of those. He will be missed, and he was a conscience to all of us, talking about the importance of making sure that we were doing right by the city. So Claude, and so we want to think of his family, Anita and the children. So, thank you.
Yes, and I was, I was going to mention that as well. Claude died November 12th, and I was, I was stunned. I met Claude back in 2015, when I first campaigned for this position. And from the moment I met him, one of the things I appreciated about him was he challenged me to be a better representative. Staunch advocate for all of Lansing, but certainly for South Lansing. And really helped me, along with others, to identify issues, prioritize issues, brainstorm solutions, implement solutions. Just an incredible, incredible man. That was one part of an incredible, incredible family. And so, again, if we could remember Anita, his son Tom, his daughter Tess, we'd greatly appreciate that. Councilwoman Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, you know, two, two very good people we've lost. But Mr. Beavers, I knew him at LCC when I went to LCC. One of the few people that called me Patty. But again, you know, I'm stunned, saddened by his passing, saddened by the bishop's passing. It's, it is, it is a stark reminder of how fragile life is, right? So, you know, it's, I'm a little lost for words over Mr. Beavers. You know, you always, you know, you know people get older, but it's still, when that loss is there, it still hits very close to home. And so, God bless their families, and, you know, bless their friends as well. Thank you.
Thank you. You are joining in us in a moment of meditation followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with the great king of justice for all.
We do not have council proceedings for approval tonight, so we are going to go to special ceremonies and presentations. We're going to move forward a couple of the appointments so that folks who have been waiting a little bit can get taken care of. So we have item, agenda item number 13, the appointment of Dr. Thomas Woods to the Human Relations and Community Services Board.
Councilwoman Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll get myself together here. We have Dr. Woods come before us to talk about his, he's currently, or his background was, he's currently the executive director of an emergency overnight homeless shelter in Lansing. But as, if I'm not mistaken, you're looking towards retirement? Was that, was that, or did I miss that? He is retired, that's correct. You are retired. And, you know, one of the things that I think when the board, when he came before the board that we really appreciated was that you had worked in that space. And so, what we asked you was, would you be a voice, you know, that would ask the tough questions and, and be a strong advocate in that position? And you, and you said yes. And he's been in, you know, he's been served in human services arena and for nonprofits for, for much of his career. And so, we are pleased to have you serve. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
And with that, I'll move the resolution.
All right, there is a motion on the floor. Further questions, comments? The one thing I really appreciated about Mr., Mr. Woods in terms of the interview was we, you know, we were very, very transparent in terms of the importance of this particular board. As a matter of fact, I attended the last Human Relations Community Services Board meeting, and we actually had our city attorney there to discuss the, the charge of that particular board. And the fact that this, this board is really meant to step into a number of arenas and do some really, really critical work on part of the city to make sure that things are above board, investigations play out the way they're supposed to play out, the list goes on and on and on. That particular board has been functioning, I think, with five people for some time. Now, it's difficult, obviously, to meet a quorum of five when you have five to get five. And so, I know the chair, Ron Embry, is very interested in populating that board so that they can begin to engage in committee work and, and again, really do justice by the people of the city and really make sure that they're carrying out the charges of that, that particular board. And so, I think Mr. Woods knows the work that is ahead, and I think he is, he was steadfast in wanting to serve on this particular board, and we appreciate that.
Thank you.
With that, councilmember Brown.
Thank you so much. It's so good to see you up here. I had the opportunity to view and talk with Dr. Woods quite extensively in the community and the work that you do, so I'm very glad to see that you're able to step up and to give your lifetime of expertise as well as your credentials. So, thank you so much for that. It's very.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Mr. Woods, if you want to come on down, we'll get you sworn in.
Right up here to the mic. Turn around and face the audience. There we go. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear. I do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Michigan. And the Constitution of the State of Michigan. That I will faithfully discharge the duties. That I will faithfully discharge the duties. Of the office of. Of the office of. Human Relations and Community Services Advisory Board Member. Human Relations, Community Services Advisory Board Member. According to the best of my ability. Congratulations.
All right, congratulations. Ladies and gentlemen, that takes us to consent agenda item. So we are actually going to be pulling number five. We have Mr. Carl Dorsheimer in the audience. So this is an appointment for Carl Dorsheimer as an at-large member of the next Michigan Development Corporation Board for a term to expire April 15th, 2024. Councilwoman Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. What we have before us, of course, is Mr. Carl Dorsheimer to sit on the next Michigan Development Corporation Board for a term to expire April 15th, 2024. This is a small board, and it's basically for a certain subset of the Lansing Airport property area. And so, Mr. Dorsheimer would serve on that board. As we know, he's currently the president, CEO of the Lansing Economic Development Corporation. Just to let you know, his address does say he lives in the city of Portland, but you do not have to be a city resident to serve on this board. With that, I'll move the resolution.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. Further discussion. Any hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Mr. Dorsheimer, come on down.
Right up there. Raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of.
Next Michigan Development Corporation Board Member.
Next Michigan Corporation Board Member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
All right, that brings us to our comments by councilmembers and city clerk. Do we have any councilmember comments tonight?
All right, seeing none. I have just a few. One, I want to remind folks in Southwest Lansing, we, we do not have, historically, we have not held constituent contact meetings in July and December. That was actually a decision made way back in 2016 by the group. They, they wanted a summer break, and then they also wanted a break for the holidays. So we will not be meeting this second Saturday, but we will be meeting January 14th, so that will be our first meeting in the new year. Those meetings take place at 5825 Wise Road, also known as the Alfreda Schmidt Southside Community Center in the Sandy Allen Room. So again, our next constituent contact meeting will be January 14th, which is the second Saturday in January. We do have a Southwest Action Group meeting tomorrow at 6:00 PM. It's at 2101 West Homes. I've talked a lot about the work that Southwest Action Group has done historically, some of the work that we're looking to do moving forward. And of course, we're always looking to grow our base and, and really, you know, trying to re-energize the group and make sure that we can implement the, the goals and objectives of the group. So if people are interested in coming down, again, that's tomorrow, 6:00 PM, 2101 West Homes, which is also known as the Southside Community Coalition. And then lastly, the same group, Southwest Action Group, is actually having a Holiday in the Square event that is going to be held December 16th at 6:00 PM. And that is at the Town Square in Southwest Lansing, located at 34, 34 Pleasant Grove Road. There will be hot cocoa, there will be cookies, there will be carols, or caroling, sorry, led by Judge Kristen Simmons. We will have Santa Claus on hand, the list goes on. So we are, oh, sorry, this is December 16th at 6:00 PM.
Yep.
Okay, so we hope to see you all there. And with that, clerk Swob.
Thank you. I guess the only thing I want to announce is just when you thought the election was over, it's not over. There's a recount this Thursday and Friday, a partial statewide recount of proposal three involves the city of Lansing, so stay tuned. I don't think it will change the results. But anyway, with that, we are to community event announcements. If anyone in the audience has a community event, we'll give you one minute to tell us the time, place, and just a little bit of detail about it.
Well, they say time flies when you're having fun, and it must be true because the Cemetery Courtesy Office on Friday, December 16th, hits its third year anniversary. We will be holding an open house there. Your councilmembers, the mayor, the parks director are invited to attend that. It's from 12:00 to 2:00 in the community, in the Courtesy Office, Cemetery Courtesy Office, right across from Mount Hope Cemetery. That's a historic agreement that has turned out to be very beneficial, I think, to both parties, and we look forward to continuing for some time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Willow Tree Family Center is having Meat Black Santa, and there's going to be toys raffled every 15 minutes. It's at 1141 North Pine Street, and that's from 1:00 to 4:00 PM on September the 10th, which is Saturday.
Thank you. And I don't see anyone else with community events, so we will go ahead forward. Now is the time for speaker registration for public comment on legislative matters. The legislative matters includes the public hearings, as well as all of the resolutions and ordinances, so items two through 23 on the agenda. We'll give you about another minute to sign in on the blue form with Jason in the back. And in the meantime, we will go to the comments from the mayor.
Mayor Shore.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. I have a handful of things. I already mentioned Bishop Maxwell. We won't do that again. But I do want to congratulate, I don't.
We are, yeah.
Yeah, sorry about that. I do want to congratulate all the folks who, who won election, our legislative delegation, Kara Hope, Sarah Anthony, Sam Singh, Angela Whitwer, Emily Deivendorf, thank you. And I wanted you all, as councilmembers, to know that you all provided a resolution passed that would encourage the legislature to review housing based on the Jackson ordinance. And I took that last week and sent it to each one of our delegation members, and as I meet with them, I'm going to be pushing that as well. Because I believe that is important. And so I've let them know that we are all on the same page, fully supportive. So hopefully, with some, some friendly members representing our area, we can see some movement on that. So just didn't want to let that fall off now that we have a new legislature. A few other things, as a reminder, yard waste collection dates are passed, so please don't put out any new yard waste if you're out there and, and watching. Our 311 has now passed 16,360 calls, so that's good news as we assist our residents. I want to thank the 100 cops and 100 kids that were part of Shop with a Cop on Saturday, which I understand was an incredible event. I want to congratulate a novel concept for their grand opening on Washington, also over the weekend. And congratulations to pastor and first lady Trice. He is stepping down as pastor, and certainly thank him for all he's done. I want to thank Dave Holland at the tire, the Auto Care Center at Mount Hope and Cedar. He dressed up as Santa and put some food trucks in his parking lot, and I thought it was very nice what he did. And finally, I want to thank everybody who was part of the Lansing Save Night event on Saturday, where we are certainly showing our, our youth that we are putting money in for them for, for saving for college. And then finally, it's probably still going on, but thanks to everyone who came to the Hispanic Symposium this evening. They're advocating for, for more, for more Hispanics in, in the public services and also raising money to help our community. So I think that's great. It was nice to be there, but certainly I had to leave to, to join city council. This Wednesday, I want to remind everyone that we have the, the ENO, East Side Neighborhood Organization Holiday Party, as well as the Lansing Area AIDS Network Holiday Gallery, Holiday Gala at the Art Gallery, the Lansing Area Safety Council, Safety Network has their ribbon cutting for their new location, the Red Cedar Lodge Senior Housing has a ribbon cutting and an open house. And on Thursday is the Red Cedar Grand Opening Party. So lots going on this week, as there always is in the city of Lansing, and I hope we'll all be able to get out and check it out. Thank you.
Okay, we are to public comment on legislative matters, and as I indicated, that includes items two through 23 listed on the agenda. The first items two, three, and four are public hearings. Item two is an ordinance adding Chapter 291 to establish HUD conflict of interest policy. Item three is Public Act 425 Agreement with Windsor Township. And item four is South Martin Luther King Boulevard Corridor Improvement Authority Development and Finance Plan.
All right, so very quickly, Vice President Wood, did you want to discuss items two and three?
Thank you, President Hussein. As the clerk indicated, this is to establish a conflict of interest policy in an ordinance. This was something that was required by HUD, and after this is passed, then we will submit it to HUD for their review. The second is the 425 Agreement with Windsor Township. This has to do with the development with Consumers Energy. We, as well as Windsor Township, will be voting on this item. So, and again, for anyone who does not understand 425 Agreement, this is outside the boundaries of the city of Lansing, but it will be considered Lansing, and we will receive income and property taxes from this development.
All right, thank you. And then to item number four, councilwoman Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. This public hearing is on the South Martin Luther King Boulevard Corridor Improvement and Finance Plan. This is a second hearing due to an error in publishing, so for sake of caution, we, we are having a second public hearing tonight. The Martin Luther King Corridor Improvement boundaries are north, railroad tracks south of Victor Avenue at the north end. On the south end is right at I-96. The authority was established in 2019. Some of the goals of the, I'm sorry, yes, some of the key projects are to look at economic vitality, design, organization, and promotion of the corridor. Funding sources for it would be future tax increment revenues, state, federal, or other grants, public and private foundation grants, fundraising, fees, sponsorships, and monies obtained from other sources approved by the city of Lansing. That I'll move.
All right, there is, oh, sorry, clerk Swob.
Okay, so we have Mike Lynn followed by Jody Washington.
So as I spoke at the community hall on the ARPA funds, the, the presentation they gave, it's not acceptable ultimately. The way I see it, it's a hospital, per se, for somebody that's mortally wounded, but first they need an ambulance. And that's the biggest problem. And I think, Brian, you spoke to the fact of this is not really causing, or, excuse me, a solution to any immediate issue that we have right now. It's more of a long-term situation, which she said, yes. I feel like it's time for this council to be brave enough to send it back until it reflects what it is that you guys want to see. There's plenty of money out here going to these organizations. They named them off, Holy Cross, and all these other organizations out here that just can't affect change with the immediate situation when somebody is homeless today. Mike Carl always states, I'm one paycheck away. The guy works at GM, works overtime up the, you know, up the wazoo, and it still can admit that I'm one check away from being homeless right now. What is there out there to affect change for that man when it's 10 degrees outside right now in a situation? Water Park is flooded with people and individuals that need resources constantly, but that's not the biggest issue for me. The biggest issue for me, and I, I would have never even probably paid attention to this had you guys not have brought, not you guys, but the city of Lansing Executive Board Administration brought the, the market down there. I would have never even seen, when I was riding past there seeing those built, I thought they were for them. And I was like, wow, the city's actually doing something. Sure, it's really not that bad. And then I found out that it was for the elite to come do loser time. And so I started to ride past there. I lived downtown, started to ride past there like every, you know, now and then, and I would see people out there. When I'm so cold in the car, you know, that I'm, I'm shivering, and I got the heat on blast, heated seats on, and people are sitting on patio, you know, park benches because there's heat vents underneath of them. We have an issue in Lansing. We just do. And I, I think that ARPA, especially like all the funds that were given, 50 million and then this, another 2.5 or 2.7, were for an immediate fix of an issue that arose. It was an immediate situation. I can remember back in March of 2020, sitting at a bar, having a beer, watching a game, and the next thing you know, I'm locked in my house. That was an immediate situation. Fortunately enough for me, I had, you know, things in place that I didn't get put out on the street, but people did. So this next 10, 15 years out, or 10 or five, or whatever years it is going to be, and I kept hearing developer, 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 and that's always a common phrase with this place, is developer, 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 we'll figure out how to use this money, use that money. I just tasked the city of Lansing to think for one time, if we stop paying 80% to developers and all of these other things and put 2.7 million dollars at the problem, instead of saying, we're going to, you know, I know you have this gouging cut, I'm going to create a Band-Aid factory, it's going to take us 10 years to build and get out there before I can put, put something on to stop the bleeding. Just think equity one time, think equity one time, and think about how can this 2.7 be used beneficial to the people that are in this situation right now? And be brave, and send it back to them until it comes back with what it reflects that we all want to see. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jody Washington followed by Brad Crabel.
Thank you, Jody Washington. Andy, I want to say I'm going to miss Bishop a ton also. He was the one man that was brave enough to stand up in front of all of his colleagues and defend me against a wrong that they had done to me, and I will be forever grateful. So I was sad about his retirement, and I'm, I'm extremely sad about his passing. I too wanted to talk about the home art funds. I am not happy with what was presented, and I will.
We're going to, we're going to stop you just real quick. If you could pull the mic just a little bit closer.
Sure. Is that better?
That's much better.
Okay, I am too not happy at all. I will echo what Mike Lynn just said. When I heard developer, 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 I wanted to puke. Something in my stomach just turned. And when we talk about permanent supportive housing, what you all don't know is it isn't working. And we want to throw more and more and more money at these agencies that are not working correctly, and more money at developers to warehouse poverty. Y'all, we got to do it different. Why aren't we using money to help people that can't afford to fix their homes fix their homes so that they're livable and they can stay in them? Why aren't we using that money to demand that these large complexes of townhouses be repaired? We have children and families living in those. And if these 750 red-tagged units were fixed, do you know how many families we could house? But all we talk about is, oh, Holy Cross Advent House, and more and more agencies and more developments. We aren't taking care of what we have. And for them to build this and to throw more money at these agencies, I guarantee you will help nobody but the people that are working for the agencies and the developers that are collecting the money. You guys, it has to stop. Demand that what we have be fixed. We have a ton of townhouses that are perfect for families. We have people in low-income housing. I'll talk about the other stuff later, but this isn't working. And for you to throw more and more of our money at the same thing over and over again would be a shame on you. And I'm just asking you, send it back. Don't accept that. Start doing something that will really make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Brad Crabel followed by Jennifer Estill.
Hello. I'm Brad Crabel, Director of Real Estate Acquisition for Consumers Energy, and I'm here today to speak in support of the 425 Agreement between the city of Lansing and Windsor Township. It really is pretty exciting for us. We went on a search for a new facility to serve our customers into the future, looking at how we can be quicker, better serve those, those customers. And we found a way with this 425, working with the city and the township, to continue our relationship that we've had with the city since the 1920s. And so we're pretty excited about that. Our existing facility, we've enjoyed being in that neighborhood, and equally as important to us is, is moving to this new facility to support our customers in the best way we possibly can. our customers in the best way we possibly can is making sure that we work with the city to get a new use, to get a new life for that property where we are at today. Last time I was here, the council did have some great questions about some of the remediation. That site on Willow Street is a former manufactured gas plant site. What about the remediation? What does that investment look like? And while we have a lot of work to do engineering-wise and plan-wise to really fine-tune what that dollar amount will be, I will tell you, it's multimillion-dollar project over multiple years. We feel at this very early stage that it will be less than $20 million investment. And our company is very excited about working with the city to getting that property back to use and life again, the second life, so that can contribute to that neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jennifer Estill followed by Loretta Stanaway.
Hey, everyone. I'm just here to reiterate my support for the Ovation. As you know, we moved our business downtown in the middle of the pandemic, expecting state of Michigan to come back, as did some other very brave people. And for my neighbors who are retailers who have hung on for many years or are trying to get a foothold like a novel concept, the idea of a space that's going to bring thousands of people on a regular basis to Washington Square is really important and we're all very excited. Not only for downtown, but for how it will connect to Rio Town. And I can just imagine when that space is up and running, somebody who can drive by and see that the summit exists and understand they can get a comic book, or they can maybe go to Blue Owl in Rio Town after a show or before a show, they can come by my gallery, they can see what downtown and Rio Town have to offer. So again, we're very, very excited. I know we're like, oh, the baseball park, da-da-da-da. The baseball park is fantastic. A big fan myself, but there's a fundamental difference between a place that will be busy every single week rather than a fraction of a season. And so I feel it in my gut, and those of us who are small business owners on the square really are looking forward to having something else to help bring people downtown. So I'm urging you all to help us get there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Loretta Stanaway followed by Erica Lynn.
Okay, y'all know how I feel about Oprahs and brownfields and pilots, so I'm not gonna delve into that arena of conversation again, but I would like to direct you to a new thought process. You heard others challenge the city to take new directions and think differently about things, and I'm going to challenge you to do that in these regards as well. We need to stop thinking about giving developers pilots, giving developers Oprahs, giving them brownfields, because they have not maintained what they have. We need to take a different look at things. I initially was from New Jersey, and in New Jersey, if you are a resident, you have to have your car inspected every year. And if it doesn't mean inspection, you have to fix it. So it's gonna mean inspection. They don't have junkers and clunkers on their roads. They don't have unsafe vehicles on the roads. They, if you converse that to a housing situation, a building situation, a facility situation, why should we, why should we not have enough staff in public safety, in building safety, in fire safety, in code compliance, that we can inspect facilities annually or biannually and hold them to standards that don't allow things to get to a point where you need an Oprah or you need a brownfield because you've contaminated something that you didn't clean up? Or you need a pilot because you can't afford to do things other ways? We need to change the way we look at things. We need to start staffing these different departments in a way that allows them to go out there and inspect buildings, hold them to standards, make them responsible and accountable. It increases your property values, which increases your taxes, and it pays for itself in fines and violations and permits that have to be generated and paid for. It's time to look at stuff in a different way, folks, and I hope you will do that. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker is Erica Lynn.
Hello. I too would like to speak on the ARP funds, the allocation plan that was outlined tonight. I think one of the biggest issues that I have with the entire presentation and with the budget is that it left a heck of a lot more questions for me than answers. In addition to that, I think that there were a number of really, really great questions raised by several of you. I mean, really good questions. That doesn't often happen where I literally have something burning, a hole in me, and I can't ask that question, and then one of you asks the question. And I don't think that there was one time that I heard what, in my opinion, would be an acceptable answer. It was either an acceptable answer, it was a non-answer, or it was an answer that raised a huge red flag. So when I think about the type of funds that we're talking about and what they're supposed to go for, and then I think about the acute nature of the needs that our city is facing right now, especially with the homeless situation that we have going on, I can't imagine that the input that they received, not once did it come up that maybe, just maybe, there should not be a zero next to tenant-based rental assistance. That is one of the acute ways that we could address the housing crisis that we are facing right now. We haven't even begun to feel the effects of people being evicted and being homeless for the first time. We are going to see record-high numbers very soon here. But what I did see is 55% of it going to the development of affordable rental housing. We have to understand and remember that the development of anything takes so much time and it is so much more expensive. There are cities that are literally spending these funds in ways that utilize acquisition. Why do we never look at acquisition? We have properties across the city that are just vacant, not being used. It's less expensive, it's quicker. There are cities that you can point to, Boston, look it up. There is literally a program being funded by ARPA funds called the Acquisition Opportunity Program, and you know what their goal is? To protect the city's rental housing from housing stock, from market rate on affordability, and gentrification. That is what we need in our city right now. Things like that, solutions like that, money that is going directly to people that actually need it, developers, development. I heard that so often today, and I always think about why that is. Even in, and this might have been missed, $500,000 to the acquisition slash development of non-congregate shelters. It should just be acquisition. Why do we constantly have to insert development and then we find out today it's with the possibility of a pilot request? We are tired of that. We have things that can be done right now that would have an immediate effect on the issues that we're facing today. I would not be able to vote yes on that with the questions that you all had.
Thank you. I also want to acknowledge a couple of written communications, both are in support of the Ovation Center. One is from Toby Weston and the other is from Jennifer Estill. And with that, we are to the referral of the public hearings, number two, the conflict of interest.
Committee of all.
And item three, the 425 agreement.
Committee of all.
And item four, the Martin Luther King Corridor Improvement.
Development.
Okay, we are to the consent agenda.
All right. So at this point, what we have, we have a balance of items six through 12. So as you're looking at your consent agenda, before I turn the floor over to Vice President Wood, is there other items that we need to have pulled tonight? Seeing none, Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. The first item that we have on the consent agenda is the reappointment Shirley Carter Powell for an at-large member for the Arts and Cultural Commission to expire June 30th, 2026. The second item is the reappointment of Jenny Geis as the city of Lansing member of Capital Area Transportation Authority Board, which would expire September 30th, 2025. Next is the collective bargaining for the capital city labor program, non-supervisory contract. This is a four-year contract and it is a first and second and third years are 3% increase and the fourth year is a wage opener. The next is collective bargaining for United Auto Workers, and that is for 172 full-time employees. That is for the first and second year is a 3% increase. The third year is a 2.5 and the fourth year is a wage opener. The brownfield for money ball, plan number 83, and this project is for 923 and 927 West Saginaw. This person has purchased these properties. They did not create the brownfield or create the need for the brownfield. They are buying it and then remediating the problem, the contaminants that are on this particular brownfield. Next is the Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act District. This is for the Michigan Certified Development Corporation for Property at 1703, 1717, and 1723 East Michigan Avenue. Next is the Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act Certificate, and this is for M3 Group LLC for the property at 221 West Saginaw. So with that, I would move the consent agenda.
All right, thank you. There's a motion on the floor for the discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, item 14, Make Safer Demolish for 304 Regent Street.
Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. This particular property was red-tagged in 5, on 51, 202018, and then re-tagged. No, I'm sorry. This was originally tagged in 1-0, January 10th, 2018. This particular property, the estimated value of the property is $36,000. The estimated amount of repairs are $45,000. This is a fire-damaged property. There is no insurance that the city is holding on this, and so code compliance is asking for a 30-day make safer demolish. So I would move that property at this time.
All right, there is a motion for a 30-day make safer demolish. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And item 15, setting a show cause for 4580 Seaway.
Thank you. This particular property was red-tagged on May 7th, 2021. The estimated value of this property is $1,409,941. The estimated value of repairs are $407,759.64. This is a fire-damaged property. What we would be doing is setting the public hearing for December 12th, so for a 30-day make safer demolish. So this is to move for the setting of the public hearing.
All right, there is a motion on the floor to set a public hearing. Further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And item 16, set in a hearing for SLU 1 of 2022.
Sorry about that. Councilwoman Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. What we have before us is a setting of a public hearing, and I apologize, I don't know when, I think it's for the 12, December 12. But I don't, no, when is it for? January 9?
January 9.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Setting of a public hearing for January 9th for a special land use permit, 109 East Randolph Street for a 20-bed state licensed adult foster care, large group home for the age. And we're also gonna later on have an ordinance for introduction in the setting of the public hearing for similar, but it's rezoning from R6A Urban Detached Residential to RAR Residential Adaptive Reuse. So this is, the applicant for this initially came to the committee. What he wants to do is to provide round-the-clock care for up to 20 senior residents. This is at a former convent to, I think it's St. Therese on Turner Street. And so the, he wants to, this applicant wants to purchase a convent to provide round-the-clock care for up to 20 residents. It is a, it is a special land use permit for the rezoning so that the rezone is specifically for this project. Let's see. I think that that's enough. It's a provide around-the-clock care for up to 20 senior residents. It said it'll generate low-volume traffic. We talked to them about parking, and one of the concerns of parking, particularly for the employees, that they were talking to the Catholic Church adjacent to them to kind of come up with some proposal, but at this point, they will be parking on the street. With that, I think I will move the resolution.
All right, there's a motion on the floor to set a public hearing, and again, this would be for January 9th. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, item 17, sale of portion of North Cemetery.
Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. This is the voter-approved sale of city property. This is a section of North Cemetery that is not been used for cemetery purposes. There was a proposal to sell the property for $8,500, and the money would be designated in the resolution to be used at North Cemetery. With that, I would move the sale of this property.
All right, there's a motion on the floor for the discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And item 18, the substantial amendment for the annual home, or action, allocation plan, sorry.
Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. This is an amendment to our 2021 Annual Action Plan to include these additional dollars that have, that have allowed us to apply for this. The amount is $2,784,822. These dollars can be used for home ARP rental housing, tenant-based rental assistance, supportive services, non-congregated shelters, nonprofit operating and capacity building assistance, and that is capped at 5% of the statutory, and then administrative and planning, which is capped at 15%. The budget that was presented to us would have funds going to the supportive services, the acquisition and development of non-congregated shelters, for the development of corridor rental housing, for nonprofit operating, for nonprofit capacity building, and, which is at 1%. The nonprofit operating is at 5%, and the administrative and planning is at 10%. With that, I would move the resolution.
All right, there's a motion on the floor for the discussion. First, we'll go with Councilman Jackson and then Councilman Garza.
Thank you. I just kind of wanted to put on the record why I will vote for this today, and it's because it's my understanding that although the $2,700,000 plus is for these purposes and has been allocated, as we heard, that that's just a proposed allocation and that it could still switch around within that amount and in those line items. My understanding is that each one, as it's written, My understanding is that each one, as it's written, is not required to stay in that. But we do have to accept the money so that a RFQP can put out, be put out. And then one of whoever picks it up will per- make a proposal within these categories. And it doesn't necessarily have to be tagged to that amount. So to get the money into the next phase and hopefully whatever it comes back is um ideal to what we want, I'll support it.
Thank you, uh Councilman Garza.
Thank you, Council President. So I guess my, my, my question is, is there a deadline to where we have to accept this money or otherwise we forfeit it?
Mayor Shore?
I don't know, I'd have to check. Um, are, I don't know if our finance folks are still here.
No, they are not.
I can check, but I don't know the answer to that on hand.
So we don't know.
Okay, so I guess, and then to uh Councilman Jackson's uh comments. Now that RF uh PQ, whatever it is, um, didn't that already go out? No, it didn't, so they still have to do that. And is there room for negotiating this once we do accept the money? And who's, who's responsible for negotiating it to change, make changes to this?
Uh, yeah, exactly. Um, Mayor Shore, if you want to address that aspect of it, we'd appreciate it. Which, which part of the? I'm sorry, if you want to ask your question again, regards to?
Uh, yes, so, so like to Councilman uh Jackson's comment, if we do approve this money or accept this mon- approve to accept this money, is there room to make changes to the allocation process? And if so, who's um responsible making those changes?
Well, usually the way it works is as an RFQP, we propose, and then if it's something that has to come to city council, you all get to review and we either work together or you reject it and we come back. But again, that's the normal budget proposal. That's the normal budget process.
Okay.
Again, I have to see if there's a deadline for this. The ARPA funds in general um were two years, four years. That was the, the general ARPA funds. You had to allocate and be committed by two years and then spend by four. But I don't know if the ARPA home is the same thing, so I'd have to check that.
All right, thank you. All right, uh Councilwoman Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. So to try to answer some of the questions, I think Barb said that we have five years to spend the money. That was the first thing. But this is a very um specif- if, from what I understand, this is a very specific um pot of dollars that can only be used for a very specific purpose. And so it really can't be used for um any short term activities. It, it can only be used for that, 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 that housing. Now, you know, for me, I, I agree, you know, that if we're, we're addressing, you know, the homeless issue, you need short and long term. And it's, it's unfortunate, um, we're kind of, I guess it's kind of the cart before the horse. If this comes before us and this is a long term solution, um, but, you know, we need both. Um, and, and so, but the, but the, these grant dollars are very specific to be used. They can't be used for anything other than what Barb mentioned. Um, and, you know, you can move the dollars around um for whatever. But um earlier this year, um, we got a report back to council where um it was HRCS at the time. And um Barb Kimmels group, they went out and they did kind of a, a charrette of some sort to different organizations, the social organizations, asking them what, what the needs are in the community. And they came back with a list of, of needs. Um, some of the short term um needs are for homeless or in other things. But the larger need overwhelmingly, that group said, um, was um affordable housing. And so I think that was one of the reasons why the proposal um that Barb came through was so heavy on the affordable housing, particularly the affordable housing that dealt with that particular subset of groups that's in the um, the proposal. That's in that, um, that's in Barb's, um, I'm sorry, I, I, I'm losing my sense. That, that was in Barb's presentation. So it, it, it can't be used for um short term um addressing of a housing issue. It just, the grant is specific. So I just wanted to clear that up.
Yeah, it sounds like.
We appreciate that. Uh, Mayor Shore?
No, I, thank you. Um, it sounds like according to, to Barb, that she said the, that HUD is anxiously awaiting our plan. We were emailed about it about two weeks ago. We're not overdue, but time is of the essence. And I guess the deadline is first of March, but certainly um we need to get it there pretty quick.
Okay, and we appreciate that. Further questions, comments? All right, seeing none. And again, this is uh for the substantial amendment to the annual action plan include home ARP allocation plan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
That was five. Yes, it passed. Passed, yes.
Okay, uh, we have item nineteen, Act thirty-one incorporation of the Lansing Public Media Authority.
Vice President Wood.
This is um, the next three items um go together. The first is Act thirty-one, which is incorporation of the Lansing Public Media Authority. This is the document that would create uh the Lansing Public Media Authority and the um structure for um, for managing um the authority. So with that, I would move um Act thirty-one.
All right, there's a motion on the floor for the discussion. Act thirty-one, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
No.
Passes six to two.
And item twenty, uh limited tax obligation bonds for the Ovation Performing Arts Center.
Vice President Wood.
Thank you, uh President Hussein. This is the issuance and sale of limited tax general obligation bonds for capital improvement to the Ovation Performing Arts Center. This is not to exceed twenty million dollars. We were told during the presentations that um the debt service would be paid out of the franchise fee. Um, and that would uh sustain um making sure that the debt service was paid. Um, with that, I would move the issuance and sale of tax limited obligation bonds.
All right, there's a motion on the floor for the discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Nay.
Motion carries six to two.
And item twenty-one, the grant acceptance for the Ovation Performing Arts Center.
Vice President Wood.
Uh, next before us is we've received a grant from uh the Michigan um enrichment grant uh for the Ovation Performing Arts Center of two million dollars. With that, I would move the acceptance of the grant.
All right, there's a motion on the floor for the discussion. Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
No.
Okay, um, we are to ordinances for introduction. Uh, we have um the Committee on Development and Planning introduce an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan, providing for the conditional rezoning of a parcel of real property located in the City of Lansing, Michigan, and for the revision of the district maps adopted by section twelve forty-two point zero-two of the Code of Ordinances, property located at Z one twenty-twenty-two, one oh nine East Randolph Street from R six A urban detached residential to R A R residential adaptive reuse, with the condition that the uses of the property are limited to one single family dwelling, one two family dwelling, or a state licensed adult foster care home with a maximum capacity of twenty residents with approval of a special land use permit. Is read a first time by its title and referred to the Committee on Development and Planning.
Councilwoman Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President, what Chris said. But I would add that, excuse me, I would add that the planning staff has reviewed this and they do recommend approval um of the rezoning of the property on one oh nine East Randolph Street from R dash six A urban detached residential to R dash A R residential adaptive reuse and the um SLU special land use for a special land use permit to allow for the use of the existing building for a state licensed adult foster care um providing round the clock care for up to twenty senior residents.
All right.
You'll set the public hearing for June ninth.
Yep.
July, Jan- January ninth.
Jan- yeah, January ninth. All right, there's a motion on the floor for public hearing for January ninth. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, we are now to passage of ordinance. We have an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan to amend the Lansing codified ordinance by amending chapter thirteen hundred, sections thirteen hundred point zero-two, thirteen hundred point zero-four, thirteen hundred point zero-nine, and thirteen hundred point one-one to update the ordinance to reflect changes in laws and rules by the Cannabis Regulatory Agency, formerly known as the Marijuana Regulatory Agency, and adding section thirteen hundred point one-seven to codify the process for temporary marijuana events. Excuse me, the ordinance is read a second time by its title, was reported from the Committee of the Whole and is on the order of immediate passage.
Vice President Wood.
Uh, thank you, President Hussein. Um, the ordinance that we have before us will add definitions for marijuana education, research licensing. This will be a new license type and expanding the definition of marijuana micro um business to include Class A. And thirteen hundred point oh-four will amend the definition of applicant reflect um current state practice. It will also amend the insurance requirement to um extend access for coverage. And thirteen hundred point oh-nine will add drive-throughs as a permissible um accessory use for marijuana sales with zoning approval. Thirteen hundred point eleven will um assign educational research facilities to the same zoning as safety compliance, uh processors and secure transporters in industrial uh mixed use and urban flex uh zoning um classifications. And in thirteen hundred point seventeen, codifies the mayor's twenty uh twenty-twenty dash oh-one executive order um and adds a licensing fee of, to have um uh events on uh city owned property. So with that, I would move um the passage of the ordinance.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. Further discussion, questions? Seeing none, Clerk twelve.
On adoption of the ordinance, Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Satafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
No.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Daniels.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Uh, seven yays, one nays, one nay, the ordinance is adopted. And we are to speaker registration for public comment on city government related matters. That's the yellow sign-in sheet in the back. Uh, if you wish to uh address city council at the end of the meeting, please uh sign up in the next minute or so. And in the meantime, we are to uh reports of officers, boards, and commissions.
Vice President Wood.
Uh, thank, thank you, President Hussein. Uh, I move that all mo- all items be considered, it's being read in full, and that the proper uh referrals be made by you, Mr. President.
All right, on the motion, all those in favor just uh, sorry, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, we have items from the clerk minutes of boards and commissions.
Place on file.
And Lansing Housing Commission financial report.
Committee of the Whole.
Uh, liquor license for comfort zone cigar lounge.
City operations.
And a ballot proposal charter, uh, re- general revision question as required by the charter.
Committee of the Whole.
Uh, items from the mayor, the appointment of Robert Benstein uh to the Lansing Gateway Corridor Improvement Authority.
Uh, DMP.
Uh, SLU two of twenty-two, special land use for three forty East Edgewood.
Development and planning.
And uh the setting the hearing for that item.
Development and planning.
Um, we have issuance of sewage disposal system revenue bonds.
Committee of the Whole.
Uh, and the, we have the two collective bargaining agreements that were approved earlier this evening.
Uh, place on file.
Communications and petitions, notice from Liquor Control Commission about a transfer of ownership uh for uh seven Y ninety-seven store B.
Uh, city operations.
Okay, uh, we are to remarks by council members.
Council members, do we have other or additional re- uh remarks? Seeing none?
Remarks by the mayor.
Mayor Shore? All right.
Then we are to public comment on city government related matters. Our first speaker is Jody Washington, followed by Abby Danoo.
Thank you, Jody Washington. Um, I'm just here probably as many people are to talk about the homeless situation. But I'm gonna come at it from a different angle than they are. We all know there's an immediate need for, because it's cold. And I'm sorry that we're almost in the middle of December and we're just now talking about this. There should have been a plan a long time ago. But what we are sorely missing are shelters for families. It, you know, I will, I'm gonna tell everybody Advent House has money for a hotel program. So if you're homeless and you need a place to stay in the cold, please call the Advent House. Tell them you need a hotel room. That doesn't mean they'll answer the phone, because they usually don't. But they have the money and they can do the, put people in a hotel program. We also need shelters in this weather for medically infirmed. We have amputees, we have wheelchair bound, we have people that the shelters won't keep because they're a medical liability. They end up in the street and they're shoved into a hotel room, which is not conducive for their needs. We don't need children in cars because we don't have family shelters. Um, a lot of people prefer to stay on the streets because we don't have co-ed shelters and they're with their boyfriend and they don't want to be split up. We have people on the streets because they have animals that they won't, that can't go to the shelter. And I understand why the animals aren't, aren't allowed. There's allergies, they're trying to feed people and not animals, I get it. But I'm here to say, two thousand twenty-three, we need to build the foundation for a long and lasting plan to deal with this issue. And it is not throwing up more and more buildings to warehouse these folks. I'm telling you, the PH, the Permanent Supportive Housing Program is a joke. They get a weekly phone call, are you okay? One guy lost his electricity, lost all of his food, and they showed up with cleaning supplies. Are you kidding me? Um, the, we, we need to reach out to the faith-based community. We have a faith pa- based person. Reach out to the churches. They would be more than willing to open up their gymnasiums for a warming center, but nobody's been asked. There are so many ways we can come across on this. We're a small town. We are not Boston, Philadelphia, Los Angeles, Detroit. Uh, we're quickly becoming Flint, but we can wrap our arms around this and we can make up work. And I believe, I believe in you, Andy, that you can do this. I believe, Council, that you have the stomach for it. And I think the HRCS advisory board really needs to be involved with this and not the same charrettes for the nonprofits that we keep going to, who tell what the deficiencies are. And then lo and behold, when the grant money's there, they're the ones that get the money 'cause they told you what the need was. So enough is enough. Let's do it different, Andy, Council. Let's make two thousand twenty-three when we really lay the plan out. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Abby Danoo, followed by Niflis Zandi.
Hi, everyone. The last time I was here was in July and I was talking to you about the invasive species problem in Lansing and in the entire state of Michigan. Um, since then, I've done a really deep dive on the great mass extinction. And so I'm here to tell you what I've learned about it. I don't know if any of you have studied much ecology. I'm sure you don't have much time to do educational opportunities. Um, I've been providing free educational opportunities to the community um in the form of ecological tours of our local parks. So are you, Andy, interested in native plants? Because to me, they're a symbol of Michigan and what's special about our state. You know, the plants that we grow. So everything that you buy at a big box store for your yard, like the boxwood bushes, things that are cultivated, things that didn't originate here in Michigan, they don't support the ecology in the same way as the native plants, which are quickly, quickly dying. There's not very, very many years left to save them. And so I would encourage all of you um to come out with me to the parks. I would love to take the city council on a river trail walk next summer and to show you where the invasive species live and where the native species uh used to live. I have photographic evidence of the quickness of their decline. I have photographic evidence of the quickness of their decline, um, so I'm just gonna keep coming up here and talking to you all about it, because one thing that I noticed last summer in particular was the way that the city parks departments are spreading the invasive species. They will mow over them, and then they will multiply. At Grandwoods Park in Delta Township, they have an invasive called lesser salinine, which is taking out the trilliums, the Dutchman's breaches. Does anybody know Dutchman's breaches, you guys? No? Seriously, none of you know about the Dutchman's breaches? Or the trillium? You gotta at least know about the trillium, right? Yeah. So trillium grows with the Dutchman's breaches. They're called spring ephemerals, because they grow, they flower, and then they die back before the trees even leaf out. They're an absolute treasure, and they've been my favorite for my entire life. Um, and I've been a very privileged person, but I gotta say, one of the greatest feelings of loss that I have ever experienced is realizing how quickly they were dying and how slow we are to react to it. Um, I would like to grow these endangered ephemeral species right at the Capitol. We don't have a native garden at the Capitol. None of those plants are native to Michigan. It baffles me. It actually baffles me. So I think there's a lot of negligence in the way that we deal with things, um, not just ecology, but obviously people too. Everybody here that's talking about the problem with the unhoused population, there's a negligence to it. You know, there's an ableism to it. I am an actual disabled person, even though I might not look like it. I am an autistic person. Um, I don't know if any of you have experience with disability directly or indirectly in your life, but it makes it very hard to do things like make phone calls. You know, people expect the unhoused population to just pick up a phone and call somebody, and sometimes it's not that easy. So I just beg you all, please, look into ableism, look into trauma, and look into ecology, because these problems aren't gonna get better unless we do something about it.
Thank you. Next, we have Nicholas Zandi, followed by Loretta Stanaway.
Okay, um, so I was, um, recently informed at the constituency contact meeting of Mr. Hussein that the, uh, city charter commission's going to be, uh, reopened for first time in years, and that I have, basically, a part of it is to change the way our city council is structured. And that is to, um, basically increase the number of wards and get rid of at-large positions. And I wanna make sure, and it's on the agenda right here, in that I believe that it should be discussed, and it should be put to a vote, and it should be on the ballot. And for any council members who may be hesitant to support it, this is about getting it on the ballot, and it's not about whether or not you will support or oppose it. And I know I've got a few council members that probably do support it, and I want to make this very clear, because we've got a homelessness issue, um, and someone mentioned invasive species and others, things and disabilities. I wanna make this very clear. It would, those thing, and housing, they need to be better discussed if we had more representation from impoverished communities, because the at-large positions aren't giving really any representation for it. And I'll be sure to be on the campaign trail and getting people on the campaign for a decentralized Lansing to get the city charter in vote and a, the changes that are needed to be made. And that's all I wanna say, and I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Next is Loretta Stanaway, followed by Kyle Richard.
Well, first, I wanna thank you. I wanna thank the council members for their role in helping to get the passage of this sale of North Cemetery through. It's been a very collaborative and supportive process, and I appreciate each, each of you and your efforts to see that to a good conclusion. And then lastly, um, the Ovation Arts Center, uh, you know, in concept, it's a good idea. It's just the financials that I struggle with, and still, I wanna thank the council members that voted no on that. And I guess my hang-up is that if the proposers of this were as confident as they should be, they would not have needed to put in full faith and credit of the city into that resolution. I would have been happy to support it without that clause in there. So I just really hope that in five, ten, seven years, whatever, down the line, I don't have to stand here and say, "I told you so."
Thank you. Next is Kyle Richard, followed by, uh, Kelsey Hudson.
City's got me making arts and crafts now. Um, on Saturday, uh, I stood at the corner of Kalamazoo and Capitol from eleven AM to sundown with a sign larger than this, uh, protesting the absence of a twenty-four-hour warming center in the city of Lansing. And I just wanted to share some of the things I heard while I was down there. Um, the, the first man that spoke to me, uh, a black man, uh, thought it was important that I know that, uh, there's no white people in the Bible, which is a statement I agree with. Uh, and then he pulled out a folded piece of tissue and held it up to my face and said, "What color is this?" Um, the second man said, uh, well, first words out of his mouth were, "I'm a Navy Coast Guard veteran. I don't know why I joined the Navy. Um, it's too damn cold out here." And then he walked off. The, uh, the third man, who had seemingly been kicked out of the huddle of folks in the park, um, shared with me that when he was a kid, he had played games in the park. And he was, he was forty now, and he kept coming back, because the park was the only place that he felt safe. He also shared with a comrade of mine and I that, uh, he'd been beaten up in the park multiple times by people he knew, but that wasn't gonna happen to us, that he had our back. Uh, he went into the library to, to warm up when I started ringing my bell. And the fourth man, the fourth man told me that Holy Cross has empty beds, that Holy Cross is turning people away with empty beds, saying, "Come back tomorrow, check in with us tomorrow, see if you really need it. If I tell you I need shelter tonight, I need shelter tonight." And the fact that we don't, I mean, I, the fact that we don't have a twenty-four-hour warming center in the city that's like not faith-based, that's, that's just a space for people to go, I sa- I'll say the same thing I said on the news. Winter is not a new concept, and we need to start acting like it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Kelsey Hudson, followed by Joanne Bowman.
Hi, um, my name is Kelsey, and I live in Lansing. I know I feel I need to, um, announce that, I live here. Um, and I also was out at, um, the corner of Kalamazoo, um, park over there, and I feel like a lot of times what happens is politicians use homeless people or bring them in here to have an agenda or to bring out sympathy, and we think about them in winter, and then it's just like, that they don't exist anymore. It's like homelessness is def- is defined by a lack of a consistent place to sleep at night. That's what like the standard is. And I really wish we could like know their stories more and like know why, because many people are one paycheck away from that happening to them. Like they're one paycheck away. And the fact that we have empty houses and homeless people on the street makes like no logical sense. Like it just, I understood there's coding and all that stuff, and I totally get that, but like, it's ridiculous. Um, just because someone is, does not have a consistent place to sleep at night does not make them a less dignified human. I agree with Kyle. Winter is not a new concept, and it is just really like, looks horrible for our city. Like we have an opportunity here to look at innovative solutions for homelessness. So like, why not? And, um, yeah, it's just really disgusting. Um, I will say, I'm really excited for the Ovation, um, Performing Center. I know for a long time, for me, I felt like we haven't had, we had like Max, and then that's back, and different venues, and so I'm excited that's gonna bring in new stuff to our city. But there's gonna be homeless people on the street, so, and that just doesn't make sense to me. Like whenever I come here, there's a person that sleeps on the side on the way here, and that person occupies my brain for that couple seconds, right? But that person is out there every single night. And, um, you know, when I was at, at the park, I lost my jacket from that, and I couldn't find it, so I went out there just with my sweatshirt, and I couldn't last out there like more than a half an hour, and I had the ability to go back in my car. Um, and so, especially as there are people with significant traumas, um, people who are, have medication, like I heard someone say that they had pots, and they weren't able to get into certain, um, certain shelters because of their medical condition. Um, and that's just wrong. And so, um, yeah, I really hope that as a city, we're able to come together on that, the fact that we are able, uh, if, if we are able to get a twenty-four-hour warming center, that is just like, that's a Band-Aid on a bullet wound. Um, and I hope that we are able to do long-term solutions, but I just think it's disgusting, and, uh, like Lansing has blood on its hands. If you have the ability to have security guards at the warming stations, then you have the ability to do something. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Joanne Bowman, followed by Andy Markovic.
Good evening. Can you hear me well? Okay. Um, I live downtown, so I'm very familiar with the downtown area, the parks, et cetera. And I notice there's three areas particularly where homeless congregate in the parks. Now, Saturday, I was over at the library, and this gentleman here, back here with the sign, was out, and he, I talked with him about warming centers. Well, warming centers are pretty involved, and that would be a good thing, but I also had another idea. Um, I'd been over to East Lansing, and not on their main strip, but their secondary strip, there is an outdoor fireplace with a little ledge, and I noticed there's a homeless man next to it getting warm. I'm like, you know what? That's, that could be a really good thing. So my proposition is, in the park, right across from the library downtown, the downtown library, across from the Radisson, where other homeless congregate, and also near the fish ladder, where people can come off the river. I know you know there's a homeless, uh, tent, I don't wanna call it a park, but tent area. Um, I think it's west of the Turner Dodge House. People could go there and get warm from there. Um, I think this would be a viable, it's basically a quick fix, but it would be a help. I don't think it would be that expensive, and I don't think you'd have to go through that much to do, uh, how can I say this? I think a lot of homeless people would even avoid the warming centers. Okay? There's already homeless people in these parks, and it wouldn't be, it would beautify the pla- parks, and it would be practical. Um, the homeless population is up. I heard from this gentleman that spoke earlier, it's up three hundred percent. I think it's going to go way higher than that. Um, people have been talking about, uh, Americans being one paycheck away from homelessness. I heard statistics that it's over forty percent of people live from paycheck to paycheck. So I think if we look in the future, that, um, we're gonna have an even greater need. Um, I also would just like to close with this. A city should not be known by its greatest monuments, but by how it treats the least of its citizens. This is not a left issue, this is not a right issue, this is a human issue. And I'll, I'll leave you with that. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have Andy Markovic, followed by John Moran.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
All right, great. So, uh, I got a letter in the mail about the, uh, MLK corridor. Adam spoke to me before about this, and other members of the council, and I love the idea that we can, uh, possibly beautify and expand that area. Now, I am putting my feelers out there to see if the council would be open to a possible zoning change for that building there at the Metro Bowl, and if so, uh, if I could get it up to a certain zoning, um, so I just wondering what you guys' thoughts would be before I go ahead and apply for it.
Just, just very quickly, so this is your opportunity to provide, uh, public comment. What I would do, Andy, is if you're interested in talking to respective members, I would reach out to them respectively.
Okay.
Whether that's through email or call.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you. Next is John Moran, followed by Chloretta Duckett-Freeman.
To recap on, uh, where I'm at on everything, I've contacted everybody in the city, all the way from the police, all the way up to the mayor, Banero, when he was the mayor. Uh, never got any replies. Frustration got to the point where I ended up writing stories. Those are available on, uh, steveharrypublicpolicy.com, his website. I went to police commission meetings, that was just more frustration. Uh, now I'm back here at city council meetings, uh, and I'm in the middle of developing YouTube videos of, uh, the different things that occurred over the last twenty years I lived in Lansing. Uh, those can be found at, uh, on YouTube, at Political Accountability in Lansing, Michigan. Uh, I knew way back when that I kinda became a target of the LPD. Uh, when my house was shot up, when the cops showed up, he didn't ask if I was hurt or anything, he just mentioned that I was an activist. Um, he cussed me out for picking up the, uh, bullets, so that I destroyed the evidence. Months later, when the fish fry shooting occurred, there was shell casings up and down the street. Officer was picking them up, walked up to me with both hands full of, uh, shell casings, no gloves or anything. He said, "You don't think I'm mess, I'm, uh, destroying the evidence, do you?" Said that to me. And I knew it was in response to what was said earlier. Uh, when my house was raided, the police took anything of value, destroyed a lot, but they didn't take. Um, after the charges were dropped, the LPD still wanted to keep all my property. They took a letter from Dunning's to explain to them that we had committed no crimes, and they had no justification to keep my property. Uh, when my garage was broke into or robbed, Sherry called the police, they, uh, kinda laughed about it, didn't take any evidence, said it was an inside job, inferring that I had robbed myself. I hadn't. When I called at a later date to the LPD, asked them about a police report, they told me that Sherry had robbed me. Well, I know she hadn't either. I do know who did, but the LPD weren't interested in that. I guess what they figured was, if they couldn't keep my property and it all got stolen, that was fine and well, they probably hilariously laughed about it up in the squad room. That's what they do. And these are just a couple of the items of many, I've got like forty videos on YouTube right now. I'm not even halfway to where I gotta be on what, what all happened. And, uh, I encourage people to look at them, because I'm, I'm confident if they did things to me, they probably did things to other people. Uh, it bothers me a lot that they tried to destroy my life with lies. I'm just trying to get to the truth. I just want the truth told, uh, not just by the police, but also by the, uh, Lansing State Journal. They couldn't even tell the truth when all the charges were dropped. All they had to do, all they could do was repeat the same lies of the LPD, trying to destroy my reputation. I lost thousands. I just, I'm just looking for some kind of satisfaction, and that's up to you, Mayor Shore.
Thank you. The next speaker is Chloretta Duckett-Freeman, followed by Erica Lynn.
Hi, I'm not gonna say anything different than what most people have said. Um, I'm just here to remind our city to open up twenty-four-hour warming centers. Um, we should be ashamed that we don't provide housing for disabled people and families that are unhoused. Many of us in Lansing are one paycheck from being homeless, and I could not imagine having to split up my family of seven for us to survive. We also need housing that isn't provided by religious entities. Homelessness has gone up three hundred percent in Lansing, and many houseless people have jobs, and they pay taxes in Lansing. I believe you wanna show that you care about all the residents. Please be more thoughtful about the plans you pass for supposed affordable housing. Stop approving these pilots and pri- housing. Stop approving these pilots and prioritize our most marginalized people in the city. We don't just need housing, but we need safe and good housing. Please don't continue to tell us what you are doing through the media, because what you're doing isn't working. Start with admitting that you haven't done enough and do better. We can help you.
Thank you. Next is Erica Lynn, followed by Mike Lynn.
Hello again. I can't say that I'm necessarily surprised at the vote. I think I went into it kind of understanding and knowing that the nature sometimes of this is, it's very urgent. There's a lot of times misinformation and confusion. And so there's a feel of chaos where it kind of has to be pushed through because we're just unsure. And we all acted like we didn't know that we needed to be very, very, very sure of a lot of things before we voted on something this big. But with that, I wanted to clarify a couple of things because as I was thinking about things that were said, and when people kind of prefaced their, their yes vote with why and in clarifying on some things, I wanted to clarify some of my earlier comments. I do assure you, my comprehension game is strong. I understand exactly what the funds should be used for. I understood because I read through it, and I wanted to make sure that I understood it before I took a stance on it. So I wanted to clarify, when I talk about immediate concerns and immediate needs, I understand that that's not today things. I know this. And I know that we're not going to solve homelessness in one day, nor with these one-time funds. However, when we talk about needs that come up acutely, those are considered what I would say are immediate needs. And when I looked at the allocation, I looked at a lot of different, the line items, two in particular, that I absolutely believe we could have done better on, because those address immediate needs and acute needs that we have five years of spending on, meaning that those needs that come up immediately, that are going to come up over the next five years that we have to use this funding on, will come up, and we could have had that funding to use those. We allocated $0 to tenant-based rental assistance. That's egregious. We allocated $300,000 only to support services. Under support services, that is increasing shelter capacities, the number of beds, the lengths of stays. That's childcare for people experiencing homelessness to do whatever they need to do. Employee assistance, job training, food, mental health services, substance abuse treatment, transportation, utility deposits. All under support services, we got 300K. That breaks down to about 60K a year over five years. It's not enough. It's not enough. The other issue that I had, I want to be clear on again, was acquisition versus new development. There's enough new development going on around us. Let others take the wheel on that. We spend a lot of resources and time focused on that. This was the one time that we could have taken a step back from that and said, how do we maximize our impact on these one-time funds that we have over the course of the next five years? That's it. I, too, was at Ruder Park last week. I will say this, the need for a 24-hour emergency shelter is not new. This is Lansing, Michigan. It gets cold. And so when I realized that there's permanent structures that are a part of a plan to kind of take Ruder Park back and a permanent slab there, I do intend to get creative and be there permanently as often as I can because of the highlighting that was happening with us, again, not addressing the needs, but having fun.
Thank you.
We will be there as often as we can.
Next is Mike Lynn.
Our comprehension skills are on point, trust me. And with that being said, I recognize that some of y'all's isn't. This not being meant for emergency needs, I just don't understand what ARPA would be for. You think they gave you all this money to deal with all your issues lifelong situations? It was for ARPA. It was for right now. It's what's going on today. $2.7 million? That ain't a lot. Hell, he owes me 1.5. That ain't a whole lot of money. I'm not starting out over here begging for that. $2.7 million right now. But anyways, y'all did what y'all was going to do. Thank you, Carol, and I believe Daniels for not going around with that. Mayor's comments, 311 calls are up, and that was celebratory. Shame on y'all. It's not celebration because people have to call for help. We should be touting the number when it goes down. Today, we only had one call. That's because all of our social services are working their asses off to get things done. So we don't have a disupteen amount of calls. The fire department, we discuss how many calls we get, is because we're talking about what we have gone out to service, not just that we receive the phone call. We don't just get phone calls. With this 24-hour warming center, I think there's so much from administrative level that could be thought about. And I know that he doesn't have a whole lot of capacity to do that, given the fact that we can't hire positions, our city is in shambles, we're literally falling like a bowl of rock that's on fire right now. And it's just like, we just keep coming in here, doing the same old thing. I can't understand it. But what the 24-hour warming center could take away from is, as a firefighter and being on night shift downtown, which was one of the places I was at for a long time, I'd say 90% of our calls at night are just from homeless people that are cold. That's it. They call with shortness of breath or whatever will get us right out there. Soon as we get there, they packing their stuff up and jumping in an ambulance. Now, it takes up an ambulance for that amount of time, and I'm not complaining because I always went to those calls happily, because I thank you for calling me. It was that moment that was like, I know I'm about to die, so let me call an ambulance out here. But also, it takes up that ambulance, but then it also takes up a bed down at Spur Hospital. So when one of your family members or yourself has a heart attack or something going on, and that ambulance is downtown instead of over where they should be, helping somebody that is have a real emergency, these are all issues that have, I mean, if you just have even a little bit of vision, and you can think about it from the perspective of, we have to do something about it, over year, over year, over year. And it's like, when I get involved and when I see it, then we just, I ain't just stop coming. I'm not going to stop coming. But one thing I found very sad is that every week I come here and I see these pools full of people, right? And then as things get checked off the box and they get what they want, they get up and leave. You know who doesn't get up and leave happy? The people that come here advocating for the people. We're just constantly here advocating for the people, and never do we just get up and play, you know what? That was a win. It never is a win. Who are y'all advocating for? Where is the equity? Do we want to have fun? You don't get to just have fun when you got bills due. I know that. When you got bills due and people out here starving and dying, you don't get to throw up fun. I didn't get enough time with that, but wash America.
And that was our final speaker.
All right. Very, okay, thank you so much. So, very quickly, before we adjourn, I made a mistake with regards to the public hearings. I referred the South MLK Corridor Improvement Authority Development and Finance Plan to Development and Planning. We do not have a Development and Planning meeting until the 14th. If we were to hold off essentially until next year, in terms of actually vetting that and considering that as a body, we would not be able to set the taxable base value until 2023, which would delay capture. So we don't want to delay capture. We don't want to delay implementation of the plan. So what we're going to do is actually refer that, refer that, sorry, to Committee of the Whole for the 12th and then take it up later that night. Okay? With that being said, and no other business before the body, we are adjourned at nine o'clock.